Call this meeting to order with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prayer?
Lord, I ask for your blessing on the city of Libby and on this city council meeting tonight. Thank you for the right to express opinions and ideas and for the orderly manner in which these ideas and rules, rule of law are used to make decisions and policy. Lord, I thank you for your influence at the federal and this local level as the business of governing is carried out. Thank you for being our provider. Pray in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Counselor Beach.
Here.
Counselor Burke.
Here.
Counselor Ian Smith.
Here.
Counselor Kristen Smith.
Here.
Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Zimmerman.
Here.
Roll call is complete, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. There are no minutes to approve, so we'll move on to announcements. I had two, or I just want to remind everybody that there's, no fireworks are allowed inside the city limits for the Fourth of July, and so I just thought I'd remind people of that. And for those people who are interested in being on the Government Study Commission, the local government center will host a webinar explaining that role of the study commissioner on July 24th at 11:00 a.m. And if you're interested, I will get Leanne to post the link to that.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else have any announcements? Then we'll move on to Mr. Sykes, City Administrator's report.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council, the backup generator at the sewer plant is up and running. We had to replace a circuit board and they found some other parts on eBay, so we're going right now. For the water department, the new leak survey is underway. As soon as he gets done with that, he's been here for a week, he's gonna go start analyzing, he'll come back for another week. And as soon as we get that finished plan with the leaks identified, we're gonna get a plan set up to try to get them fixed as soon as possible. We are still in a drought and we're gonna try to alleviate going into any type of water rash by doing repair of those leaks. And if you remember, the last one conservatively figured 110 million gallons a year saved. So we're hoping to really get this thing locked down. We're still waiting on the survey report for the slip of grant over here on Spruce Street. Once that comes in, the engineers are ready to start drawing up all the plans and we'll be putting that out for a bid. Been working with rural development for a lot of work on all of our loans now at the end of the year is coming up, and we're going back a few years, so it looks like when, five years ago, we were selling 16% of the water produced with leaks and everything, there's been several major projects. We're up to about 25, 26% now. We won't be able to factor in the repairs from that last leak survey for another year once we get all the averages put in, but we're hoping that goes up to at least 40% sales. We received a letter from the DEQ over a warning letter for violations for our open pit mine up there on High Creek Road. We're gonna be working with them. The street supervisor, Justin, he went ahead and contacted them, they're more than willing to work with us on all this. So here in the next few weeks, I'll be brushing up on mining law and going ahead. We're gonna be getting numerous amendments put into.
Recording in progress.
And that's where I mailed out that warning letter to you. They're more than well, if it takes more than the 60 days that they're giving us, they have no problem with extensions as long as we're working with them. So I'll be getting on that here in the next few weeks. And just as a reminder, that lead service line survey is coming due, so I'm gonna be kinda checking out and locking my door here for a little while to finish up on that before I can get to this open mining cut. Is there any questions? That's my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. So like Sam said, it's that DDQ notification, so it's been something, another can, been kicking, get kicked down the road for quite some time, so nothing to really worry about. We handled it, just some amendments, like you said, over some things that haven't been dealt with for quite a long time. As you can see, we started working out the volunteer fire department, then just working on their new slab sidewalk. He's gonna deal for it here the next day or so if we're not gonna get the rain. Burial, the burial fees are awaited for Mr. Hodgkinson, so we had a request from the BFW to waive the fees for Green Man's burial for a veteran and kind of lost him in the shuffle for quite some time. So with that, he's been placed and there was a small ceremony performed by the BFW, so it was nice to get him back home here. Got the Cameron's and sewer mains looking at the main integrity. Rebuilt pump for the lift station down on Montana First, that's back in service. So we've got one pump completely rebuilt and then the other one will be going in here before long and have that done. We also have the back truck and wet well, clean out some garbage and some of the larger debris. Flower baskets are up, they look very nice. Had some hazard trees removed at the southeast corner farm, it's for a campground, there's five pine and two fir, so they kinda hung out over the driveway there in the back over the rear of the store. We looked at those, decided that it was probably time for them to come down due to age and hazard they, before they were out of hazard. More vandalism, had a fire in the bathroom, there's some graffiti and then the window and window frames completely smashed out of the women's bathroom. So it's secured through the concrete by screws. They, I don't know what they were beating on it with, but they knocked it completely out. So I got in touch with the contractor today, he went over there and looked at it, he was gonna secure, he's gonna secure some anchors into the concrete and then tomorrow you'd reinstall the window. I don't know what the answer is for all those vandalism that's taken place, but obviously a lot of it going on with county properties and our city properties, so it's complete nonsense, best I can tell. It's getting old. Lots of burials at the cemetery this last month, there was nine total. Pavilion bathroom repairs, we added another pressure tank and some new, some servos, so it's, it's just been giving us some fits for a while. We thought we had a handle on it here a little over a month ago, but we didn't start to have some more issues, so brought the air pressures down, added another pressure tank and replaced a couple of servos in line and that's working flawlessly now. So hopefully that's, layer items, as best I can tell, most of the time, it's a, it moved out over a period of time and stuff. That would be built. We removed some trees on the urban parks, some trees identified down there, eleven toll, I believe, that were either ill or have just been severely damaged where it was the best interest that they removed. We've been busy sweeping and jetting, we had three yard main repairs, one in the Vanderwood area, one in the alley, one in the alley between East Link and Goldheart and Eighth Street and one in the alley behind Western Windshield, so all those were repaired. Went over here off California behind Western Windshield, we removed a hydrant from the south side of the alley, put it over on the north side of the alley, kinda get it out of the right way a little more, tuck it back behind the power pole. It was a target, I think it just, it's been hit before, so we're going to do the work, it was, you know, made sense to just move it. There was an old wooden culvert under Montana Avenue in front of St. John's School. So we had, we had a void, we had a caller, the resident calling and saying, hey, there's a hole in the road. Went down and looked at it, you could look right down there, about four foot into the ground. So we patched it, came back the following week, which was last week, and removed all of it. And all that, that old wooden culvert out, all this to get material compacted it up and then we'll get to patching out the asphalt in the weeks to come. Water, like Sam said, water leaks survey has begun, be wrapped up July 12th. We've also got the Libby Volunteer, Libby Volunteer Fire Department Training Center on the road. We've got to put together a little burn, kind of a new burn training facility, put that together. So we've kind of been working with them, placement, and then we'll be welding them together. So let's coordinate, working with Steve, you know, when we got time. We've also been cleaning storm drain lids, debris and dirt this time of year, a lot of the leaves of the stuffs, you know, come off trees, the little white, little flower things that come off, they load the gutters, they go down, they plug up the storm drains, get a downpour here this afternoon, and they plug up and make a big mess. So we've been working on that. Jeff, he's also rebuilt two of the blow mowers at the waste water treatment plant, new seals and bearings, those are for the digester, those hadn't been done in quite some time. Those were in need of being done, so the second one was just back together. And we just, last week, the mechanic and I, I seen the mechanic and I went down to Missoula, we identified a need for a new carrier for the jetter. The old truck is a '76 truck and it's well beyond its lifespan. It's become virtually impossible to find parts. We're having to fab stuff together just to keep it on the road in a safe manner and just kept eyes peeled on something that was well within our budget. It's 2008 International, 25,000 running miles on it, got it for a great, a great purchase, so that'll last for quite some time, so it'll flop out on over. That's what we've been up to this last month. No questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Fire report?
Yeah, the Libby Volunteer Fire Department responded to 11 calls in the month of June 2024, two calls in the city, nine calls in the rural fire district, zero outside of the district. Three vehicles, two grass wildland, one Libby ambulance, mutual aid, and four false alarms with one miscellaneous. They're standing at 42 total calls for 2024. Also a note that they have on here is LVFD will be inspecting, flushing and painting hydrants throughout the month of July. The other thing they have on here is that the concrete job in front of the hall is about half done. Thank you to the city of Libby for providing funding and to help back in, Matt Back in and his crew as he's donating the time, his crew to get this port for us, so.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, I've got a message, it's an audio, it's inaudible and the chat is disabled.
Well, it, the internet went down early on, about roll call time, and we had to bring it back up.
Try that. Okay. And the internet went down?
Should be better?
Should be better.
Okay, police.
Madam Mayor, Council, that month of June, we responded to 103 calls for service. In those calls for service, we responded to one assault, four threatening calls, eight disturbances. We had two DUI arrests, seven crashes, 13 suspicious acts and four juvenile rape cases. Among that, we were fortunate enough to have a phenomenal city crew who was able to rebuild our sixth car. Now, we got that up and running today and it's running great, as well as Hill Brothers over in Kalispell also finished rebuilding L4, our fourth car. So our fleet is back up and running, so we're pretty excited about that. I also would like to present and swear in Officer Vincent Smart. Officer Smart was sworn in earlier this morning, but we wanted to do it again publicly, so you guys can all enjoy this time with us. Officer Smart is a local, grew up here in Libby. He ran off, served the military before coming back here and then answering the call for service one more time as a police officer. So we're pretty excited to have him and his willingness to serve. All right, go ahead and read it right here. I, state your name.
I, Vincent Smart.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will support, protect and defend.
That I will support, protect and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Recording in progress.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity, so help me God.
With fidelity, so help me God.
Thank you, guys.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any questions for me, Council?
Thank you.
Thank you. Skip down to the wildlife committee.
We got with the food bank, there's a way that we can get them to take these turkeys. Got the chief and hopefully next week we'll start taking some, taking care of some.
Any particular area you're gonna start in?
You have to ask that gentleman right there.
Any particular area you're gonna start with the turkeys?
Uh, we were aiming around the cemetery.
Okay.
Pretty large block there, so that's gonna be a good place to start.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
The building committee is also gonna meet next Wednesday at 6:30 here at City Hall.
Okay, brings us to public comments on non-agenda items and for some reason our. Recording in progress. Our, our internet keeps dropping out.
Let me just turn this off.
Okay? Recording stopped.
I might have something to do with that.
Okay, so, brings us to public comment on non-agenda items. If you have, wanted to make comments on an item that's not on the agenda, step to the podium, state your name and address, and you have three minutes. So, or is there any public comment? Yes.
Jared Langton, 1022 Mineral Avenue, Libby, Montana. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. I'm here representing the Cross Country Ski Club and I've been involved with the Cross Country Ski Club for about 10 years, my wife and kids, two boys, and I've been the vice president there for around five years. I understand that sometimes our club president's style is not for everyone and so that is one of the reasons I'm here, he didn't ask me to come here, but I wanted to bring to your attention a good opportunity to fully fund the removal of the gravel pile, which I'm sure you're all aware of, I'm just now catching up on the history of some of this. But the NRDP is prepared to fund the entire project for $250,000, just pending the city's approval and your permission to do so. Unfortunately, and one of the reasons I wanted to get involved was because we are under a tight deadline at the moment. The public comment period for projects that the NRDP is ready to fund ends July 10th and past that date, we may lose our opportunity to get the money to do this project. I have several documents here, I think some of you have them, if not, I have some copies. The first one is a proposal for removal and disposal of Spells' pile at Fire Creek, uh, Fire Creek Dam construction. It's dated August 4th, 2023, but it outlines the gist of the proposal to do the work up there, prepared by Andy?
Andy Evanson?
Andy Evanson, yes. I am just catching up on all the names and trying to put all this together. So I have that here. I also have a photo, a plan for parking lot, proposed parking lot plan that some of you may have seen, most of whom haven't, I don't know who's seen or not, I have copies of that here. In brief, the parking lot, we understand the city's concern about people camping up there on your property, people dumping there, people having illegal fires up there, who knows what else goes on up there? And so we understand the concern.
I said upfront that you had three minutes.
Oh, you might not.
You're done, sorry.
Okay.
But I will say that there was some communication with the Sydney Stewart.
Yes.
And she has said that we can request an extension of that public comment period. And so I think that might be our best bet to do that and then work on getting everybody on the same page and trying to resolve what needs to be happening, okay? I do have a question for you, did you submit an actual application or did you just submit the, this proposal?
An application for what?
To, for the grant, or did you just submit this?
Yes, no, but the NRDP has all the information, it's been officially submitted.
Okay, okay, all right, so, so. Is that agreeable with everybody that we ask, reply for an extension and then try to regroup?
Madam Mayor, is this an agenda item?
No, it is not, that's why I'm saying that this is what, as far as we can go, okay?
Should put it on the agenda?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Mr. Ower?
Madam Mayor and Council, I'm D.C.O.R., I reside in 1117 Nevada Avenue. I'm standing up here to ask to get on your agenda. You guys should have a policy for how people get put on the agenda. I came in, talked to Sam today, Sam told me that the mayor controls the agenda. I've talked to councilmen who said they couldn't get issues on the agenda. I have a written message from Councilman, the use that we're Smith is, telling me he couldn't get an item on the agenda because the mayor controls the agenda. I would like to get on the agenda to explain to you why that is illegal, why it is unethical, why it is dishonest and how you are each and every one of you violating your oath of office in allowing the mayor to set the agenda. You are the legislative body, the mayor is administrative. The only time she crosses to legislative is to vote to break a tie. Other than that, she does not control the legislative agenda, that's your agenda, that's the legislative agenda. I'd like to get on the agenda to discuss this, I can bring you all sorts of information. We've discussed it with Montana Local Government Center, I've got information from them. You guys have a policy in place that is untenable, it's unethical, it's dishonest and it's illegal. And you need to fix that because we're hearing stuff, the mayor's already got something in the works with the DNRC and it hasn't ever been on the agenda. That isn't how government works, that's how government works when it's secretive, when it is not transparent. You guys, each and every one of you, right now are violating your oath of office.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Any other public comments? Hearing no other public comments, we'll move on to new business, the first of which is to approve the street closure for the patriotic prom for the Red, White and Blues between Fourth and Fifth Street on Mineral Avenue, July 7th to 5:30 to 9:00 p.m. And I see someone here to come up and speak to that request.
Hello, thank you for letting us speak with you.
State your name and address.
Carla Derar at 137 Norman Avenue, here in Libby.
I'm Robin Tarburg at 72 Big Street.
And we are going to be having in just a few days a very awesome fundraiser for the David Thompson Search and Rescue. It's going to be at Red, White and Blues. This is a patriotic prom and it is, everybody invited to come to it, we have sold tickets, but we do need the street to be closed between 5:30 and 9:00, between Fourth and Fifth. Thought that this would be a great idea, given to us about an area that people could dance because it is prom. So that's, we feel that that's plenty of time for the culture.
I'll make a motion that we approve the street closure.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Are there any issues from the police department or anything else? It's after business hours, so it's.
And it's only Sunday.
I do actually have a question of, are you closing the entire block from intersection to intersection or just in front of Red, White and Blues or?
I think it would be better for intersection to intersection because that would keep people from turning and then trying to go.
Okay, okay, so, any other questions, comments?
Did they ask for open container bearings or anything like that?
That was not part of the request, but you would have to comply with open container.
Yeah, and we don't wanna, we don't wanna, people have to keep it inside of the Red, White and Blues property.
All right.
Just makes it easier.
Conform with, okay, okay, any, you can go ahead and sit down. Are there any public comments on this street closure request? Public, excuse me, public comments on the street closure request? Then, seeing no, hearing no other public comments, then I will call for the motion, all in favor of the street closure?
Aye.
Posed, the motion carries, you have your street closure? And I hope you have a great event. The next agenda is to approve the extension of the memorandum of understanding agreement with Lincoln County Sheriff's Office. It is the same agreement that we have been operating under for the last year with the date extension. We are, have, been building up our force, but we are still using them for field officer training and to cover some shifts that we, for whatever reason, cannot cover. So, are any questions or com, actually, would entertain a motion first, please?
I'll make a motion that we approve the extension of the memorandum of agreement with the Lincoln County Sheriff's Office.
Second.
Okay, are there any questions about the agreements or comments?
Madam Mayor, I'm going to abstain.
Thank you. Okay, are there any public comments about the extension of this memorandum of agreement? Mr. Ower?
D.C.O.R., 1117 Nevada. So what you didn't do, Madam Mayor, is inform the public how many officers we have, how many officers we had before the big quit and how many officers you intend to have. We're in Mr. Smart tonight, I'm afraid I just don't know how many you're up to. What we found out after the big quit was that we didn't need all the officers we had. And we got by pretty well with less coverage. The sheriff could provide less coverage than what we were used to and we went along fine. And one of the things that came up during the big quit was that the sheriff is responsible for all law enforcement in the county, including inside the incorporated city limits. That means we don't have to be paying the sheriff to do his job, he's already paid to do his job. You guys just continue to spend money on this, you don't inform the public. You've got one officer that is under investigation, you got a chief that has a complaint and grievance against him and you won't tell us what's going on with any of it, you're still a mess. Someone needs to clean this mess up and the guy who maybe could is gonna abstain.
Any other public comments? Any other public comments? Then, all in favor of the motion to extend this memorandum of agreement?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries, we will get that agreement signed and back to the sheriff's office. Next up is approval of propane bid. Next up is approval of propane bid from City Service Valcon and for materials and paving bid from TCI.
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, on these bids that we had put out, we got two bids in that were, that fit the criteria for the bid. We got one for propane from City Service Valcon, it's for 77 cents per pound. So the total bid, after the additional margin of 25 cents a pound, would be a dollar two. Last year at this time was a dollar 27, so that will add some additional savings to our budget. From TCI, the difference from last year is where 5/8 inch minus crust gravel was $18, now it's eight, and 3/8 inch minus crust gravel went from $45 to $9 per cubic yard. So there's gonna be some substantial savings on that if we need to purchase it. The bid for asphalt paving, when they mix it and stockpile it at our gravel pit, will be a hundred and seventy-five dollars a ton. The hot mixed asphalt paving, this is where they go out and actually clean everything up and pave it for us if we need their services, will be seventeen dollars a square yard, and that's for a one-inch overlay, and for a two-inch overlay it'd be thirty-one dollars per square yard. That wasn't bid last year, so those are new bids. And that's the bids, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I have a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the bids received from City Service Valcon and TCI Construction.
Second.
Okay, are there any questions of Mr. Sykes concerning the bids? Comments on them? Okay, any public comment on the bids? Public comment? Okay, public comment, not seeing any public comment. All in favor of the motion to approve the bids?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, those bids are approved. Brings us to all claims received to date. I hope everybody got a chance to look through them and sign them.
Make a motion, we approve all claims received to date.
Second.
Okay, are there any questions on any of the claims? Okay, any public comments on the claims? I'll remind everybody again that they are public information, you just need to come in on Monday and talk to Leann or Charlotte, and you can sit here and look through them and find out any, answers any questions. So are there any public comments on the, the claims? So hearing no public comments, all in favor of the motion to approve claims received to date?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, those claims are approved. Approve all business license applications received to date, Buffalo Built Homes and Michael's Auto Automotive Detailing.
Make a motion, we approve all business license applications received to date.
Second.
Okay, any questions about any, either of those licenses?
I would say I was very pleased with the Buffalo Built Homes, very thorough application.
It was very thorough, wasn't it?
Impression.
Yes. Any public comments on these two business applications? Any public comments? Seeing no public comments, all in favor of approval of the motion to, a motion to approve business license applications?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, those two licenses are approved. Brings us to unfinished business of discussion to amend the Libby Development Fund policy and application process. I didn't receive any information that anyone worked on a policy or agreement or any updating of this over the last four weeks, so I don't know if you have anything to discuss or throw out there at the moment, or how you want to proceed.
I think we should hire a grant writer for just the city.
Okay.
For just us.
Okay, do you have an idea of how that would look?
I was, I looked up on my own, I don't know if there's a different way that the city would have to do it, but like, just Googling grant writers, and there's, you know, a thousand different ways you can hire one, there's like, online resources, but I guess I don't really know how the city has to do that, but I, I think we should just have a grant writer for us. I don't know how to write a policy, but I think we should all work on it, whatever we want to see in it.
Okay, any other comments?
I would agree with Ms. Burke, I personally don't like that you have short-term loans. I'm just gonna see that we stay away from that.
Okay. Shall I just go down the table? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, who would, we would need a job scope and practice, you know, who would we talk to about that?
I think we probably put together the, the job description, advertise it, see how we could get someone to respond to it, come to an agreement. Kind of how we hire other-
Right.
-positions in relation to that kind of thing.
Part of that framework, I think you can use off the building inspector, because that's partially funded by us and then partially funded by permit sales.
Permit sales.
You could technically do the same thing with grant administration fees to basically fund that position partially. That way you're not spending a lot of money, but you also, if you have a motivated individual, there's an opportunity for them to, you know, do pretty well, and it becomes a self-funding position.
Okay.
I would like to see the, yeah, the policy for the building inspector and the job scope for that, I can, I can work those two in.
I will get Leann or Mr. Sykes to mail that, email that out in the morning?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other directional comments?
Mr. Taylor, you said no short-term loans, are you okay with long-term loans then?
I'm not really okay with loans, period.
Okay.
That's my, our previous history on that's been very less than successful, so I think we should stay away from that, and like I said, that's not something that we do per se, we'd have to hire an individual to do that, and I don't see that working well for us.
We tend to have long-term things that get lost in the, in the shuffle. Counsel changes, positions change, you know? People change within the businesses, and then, you know, 15, 20 years from now, unless you have somebody that brings it up, it's pretty hard to keep track of that.
Do you have any other, other ideas, though, for increasing the fund? If we're not, if we don't consider doing loans?
So, I mean, a grant writer, like we have talked about, would pay for themselves, you know, if we had different grants for different things, we wouldn't even need to touch the money. I mean, if we could get somebody that, again, was motivated, we wouldn't even need to touch the money. So, I mean, I don't know about adding to it, but I know that if we could get it up and running, the money wouldn't even be touched.
Well, good chance it would, because so many times with grants, you have to have matching funds of some sort.
Right.
So that's why I say, you can't always, you know, we're doing okay at the moment with some interest, but if interest goes to hell, then what do we do? You know, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, if we just always give away grants and we're only using so much, but we're never replenishing it per se with anything else, then where does it ever go? So, just trying to figure out how to make it sustain.
Any other comments? Or direction? And how would you like to proceed? Looking at, looking at the building inspector?
Yeah, I-
Put together.
I have a, I have a history of writing policy, so I kinda, I will kinda take the lead on that.
Okay. Any other discussion before we move on? Okay, brings us to general comments from the council? Anyone have any comments? Okay.
Do we need to, or we're already good on, on trying to move forward with the date then, to see if we can do something on the grant process with the state then?
I will, Sam and I will email her tomorrow or talk to her and see if we can extend that date.
Okay.
Okay?
Are you talking about the ski thing?
Yes.
Well, I, I think we might also want to consider how the city could become the lead in that process. And that way we control the application and the design, and it's our engineers, and since it's our property, and then, you know, it sort of alleviates the burden from the ski club, and it makes us a responsible party, which we should be, it's our pile, and I think that would be a better way to go about it.
I mentioned that to Mr. Sykes this morning, and we were having a discussion, so I think that's a good idea. So, anything else?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
One other thing, this particular thing with the ski club and Spoil's pile, again, it's, a select few know what's going on. We get last-minute emails, it's not on the agenda that Mike Frager says, "Don't vote on this," it's just thrown out at the last minute when, obviously it's being talked about. So why is the entire council lot up to speed or know what's going on? Why is this a kind of a backdoor deal?
I don't think there is a backdoor deal, that's why it wasn't on the agenda.
How does three or four people know what's going on and been in contact with people, and the rest of the council knows nothing about it?
Because we've got the information, you make some phone calls, which we do, of the past.
The request to be on the agenda came on, I didn't see it until noon on Thursday. There was nothing on it that indicated any dates on it. I had Leann email back and say, "We'll put you on the 15th agenda." And apparently that wasn't good enough, and there started being a whole lot of talk among everybody else and pressure and, and the, but by that time, the agenda was already out. By the time that the date, the date came up.
That's why I think it would be a good idea for us to take the lead on this issue, and then-
Madam Mayor, keep ordering your meeting, please, I get it.
It's our project.
Okay, so. Does that answer your question?
Kind of, sort of, I guess.
Okay, all right.
It's back to the, I mean, if we're in charge of this project, it's our project, the council voted not to do the project, to leave it alone. That was a vote of the legislative body, was not to touch that Spoil's pile, to fix the one in it, leave it alone. So why would we go back, go against what the council voted on and take charge and apply for grants to make this happen?
Because we're able to?
Yeah.
But then it needs to be brought forward before we start applying for grants and saying, "Okay, the council wants to change that decision, we want to move this Spoil's pile."
That's why it's gonna be on the future agenda.
Yes, so, okay.
I don't agree.
Any other? Counsel comments? And I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, meeting is adjourned.